...to be the flag of the United States of America and to be the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderwrought, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call please?
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Slicker?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Bonnie. Well, to start off this evening, we have a very special presentation for our city attorney, Larry Warren, who is receiving a lifetime achievement award. So I'd like to call in Zanetta Fontes to lead us in this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It is with great pleasure that I introduce a gentleman from the Washington State Association of Municipal Attorneys, Dan Hyde, who is the city attorney for the city of Auburn. He himself a recipient of this very award some time ago, so please help me welcome Dan Hyde.
Hello, law, members of the city council. I'd like to express my appreciation for the opportunity to appear before you and to give some recognition to Larry Warren, your city attorney. Larry Warren is receiving the Ernest Campbell Award for Excellence in the Practice of Municipal Law. As Zanetta said, I'm the city attorney in Auburn, and I've had the opportunity of being involved in the Municipal Attorneys Association, WASAMA, for a number of years. I've served as its president and board member for a number of years. And I was given the opportunity to appear before you in this presentation to give Larry the award that he's receiving. And I should say this, just so that you know, and it's not like I'm trying to take it back as soon as he gets it, but there'll actually be two presentations after this award. The one before you and the one that will then be given again, hey, what the Larry, at our upcoming conference. And the reason for that is because the Municipal Attorneys Association Board wanted to not only acknowledge and recognize the recipient, Larry, in this case, but any recipient of this award is thought highly of. But it's also appropriate that the people with whom he or she works most closely also have the opportunity to share in something like this, something that we think is a pretty significant contribution to a person's resume, but also a recognition of their contributions to our area of law. And I actually feel very honored to be able to participate in this presentation to Larry. I know Larry and I, Larry and I go way back. I was looking at his resume, and those of us who were municipal attorneys in the 1970s scare me a little bit because some of the folks that I have working for me weren't born. There's good and bad about it. I was going to say that he and I are old enough, but then I changed it. But then what good is changing if I tell you this? He and I have been around long enough to remember Dr. Ernest Campbell. And Dr. Ernest Campbell, this is the namesake from which this award is given. Dr. Ernest Campbell was the preeminent municipal attorney in the state of Washington. And in this regard, the Municipal Attorneys Association in the state are a pretty strong and powerful group of about 600 attorneys who all deal with various, perhaps various different aspects, but all together, the municipal law family. And every once in a while, we run into people from other states, and they're envious of the strength and organization of our association. And in this regard, I think that when you consider that there are a number of awards that are given, including the lifetime award, an achievement award, but the highest honor that this organization gives is the Ernest Campbell Award for Excellence in Municipal Service, Municipal Law. And in this regard, there is nobody else as more deserving of this award than Larry. Larry, why don't you come on up here? Larry, I feel like my attention is distracted, you know, I don't pay attention to you.
Dan's easily distracted.
That's the one secret of my existence. I guess it's not a secret if I just told you that, though. But I do want to let you know a little bit about this award. It's been given very sparingly. It was created and established by the WASAMA Board in 1992. And I think that to this date, there have only been 16, or maybe Larry is the 16th recipient of this award. So it has been given very rarely, or should be not, very sparingly. It has not even been given once a year since it existed. And just so that you have a better, further idea of Dr. Campbell, his namesake, Dr. Campbell was the original secretary treasurer of the Municipal Attorneys Association when it was first founded in 1957. And not only that, going back actually to the 1930s, Washington developed a municipal research council approach to the assistance of municipal law. And perhaps some of you have called Municipal Research and Services Center in Seattle.
Yes.
It's a good source, a good resource, but it's also a linchpin for the municipal law, and it provides an inner looking for all of us municipal attorneys. And most other states in this country do not have that tool. We're very, very fortunate to have something like that. But Dr. Campbell, who, as Larry will remember as well, we both had the opportunity to know him and hear him, he spoke pretty regularly at our organizational conferences, was a gentleman. He was a scholar, and he was unquestionably the paramount municipal lawyer of his time, but he was also a gentleman. He was courageous, courteous, he was absolutely willing to share his municipal knowledge. And in this regard, I think that's one of the things that draws Larry into the same field, because Larry is also a resource that younger or older folks can go to. I mean, I've called you in, said, hey, what do you think? And he's polite to me. At least to my face. Hey, Larry has his strengths, too. Larry, just for some of you, everybody probably knows this, but I'm going to repeat it just because I think it's worth repeating. In addition to the fact that Larry has been a very, very valuable contributing member of our Municipal Attorneys Association, Larry's also contributed heavily to Renton and, in doing so, has also contributed to the municipal law family. And some of the cases and some of the things that he's done, for instance, and I'm just only because it's the first thing that pops into everybody's mind when they think of Larry Warren is Renton versus Playtime Theaters. And Larry has forged their way for all municipal attorneys to address adult entertainment in this state. And in a good way. I mean, hey, I had to make that clear, didn't I? Yeah, but that's just one example of many examples where Larry has contributed to all of our abilities to accomplish the things that we need to accomplish. And historically, Larry himself, he started off in the early 70s as a prosecuting attorney. As I understand, because he was given a challenge, Zanetta shared with me some of the finer refinements of his practice, he was given a challenge by his boss early on in his practice to say, hey, what can you figure out about this civil law practice area? And he came up with such an inventive answer, it was a good, positive, valuable answer, that he was quickly moved away from the criminal law and became the civil side attorney thereafter. And in 77, Judge Sheldon was appointed to the bench, previous to Renton city attorney, and Larry took over. And Zanetta and I were talking about this. We don't know of anybody who has been a municipal attorney for the same jurisdiction as long as Larry has. And certainly I haven't. I apologize to you, I've been, I've moved around, and it's, sometimes I worry whether I can hold a job. But Larry is proud of himself to be able to do so. But Larry also, and I know that his, talking to his staff, knowing his staff, as I do, they're very proud to work with Larry. And that's something that we can all take a lot of joy and comfort in, just knowing that not only is he bright and intelligent and any of the fellow, but he's a contributing fellow, too. And the things that he does are good for Renton, but they're good for all of us, too. And I know that Larry takes a lot of pride in a lot of the things that he's done for Renton, the, you know, the slopes along the Cedar River, the Panther Creek Wetlands, the May Creek Corridor, and Honey Creek Corridor, and the Nalco property issues, all of these things, and the Landing, and the City Hall. A lot of these things, Larry can take a lot of joy and say, hey, you know, I had a role in that, I had a part in that. And so there's a value in being one place for a length of time. I don't, by the time I moved on, as a matter of fact, previous to coming to Auburn, I was the city attorney in Lakewood. Well, I moved away about a year after they finished their city hall, so I didn't even get to say, hey, yeah, this is the city hall I had something to do with. Larry's smarter than I am. And I was expecting argument from Larry, but no. Anyway, I did want to let you know that Dr. Campbell was a great inspiration to all of us. Dr. Campbell is the name of the award we give. I want... Larry's contributions to this city for the last 36 years. We have a special proclamation that I'd like to ask Jay to read.
Glad to do that, Mr. Mayor.
This could get rough.
It's serious, right?
Your mom's here, Larry, we're gonna...
We've been very nice, Larry. It won't happen again.
Whereas Lawrence J. Warren has served as a city attorney of Renton, Washington, for over 36 years, making him one of the longest-serving city attorneys of any municipality in the state of Washington. And whereas during the course of his long and outstanding public service, Lawrence J. Warren has been recognized and honored for over 25 years by the National Attorney Rating Service of Martin Del Hubbell, with the highest possible rating for legal ability and ethics by his peers in the legal profession and members of the judiciary. And whereas Lawrence J. Warren has been repeatedly named a Washington Super Lawyer by Washington Law and Politics Magazine, honoring the top 5% of attorneys in the state of Washington. And whereas Lawrence J. Warren has been recognized and honored by his peers in the legal profession with the Ernest H. Campbell Lifetime Achievement Award from the Washington State Association of Municipal Attorneys for Excellence in the Practice of Municipal Law. And whereas for almost four decades, he has provided outstanding legal advice, counsel, and services to the city of Renton and its citizens, including a landmark decision by the United States Supreme Court in the city of Renton versus Playtime Theaters, Inc., which established the right of local government to regulate the zoning of adult, the zoning and location of adult entertainment uses, which case has been cited in over 300 appellate decisions in state and federal courts across the United States, as well as being a subject of over 1,200 law review articles, and a subject of classes on constitutional law in law schools throughout the United States. And whereas Lawrence J. Warren has also argued numerous cases before the trial and appellate courts of the state of Washington on behalf of the citizens of Renton that have served the public's interest in health, safety, and welfare. And whereas Lawrence J. Warren has been instrumental in the orderly growth and development of the city of Renton for almost 40 years by virtue of his astute legal counsel and advice to numerous city councils and mayors of the city of Renton, including the decision of the city to accumulate properties to form the auto mall area northwest of Grady Way and SR 167, which effectively saved the auto dealer industry in Renton. The development of the downtown Renton Transit Center and adjacent commercial and residential development along the Burnett Avenue Corridor. The negotiation of various properties in the valley, which enabled the city of Renton to establish the first wetlands mitigation bank in the state of Washington, which has led to the development of an outstanding interpretive trail system throughout the wetlands bank, numerous development agreements with the Boeing Company, including the development of the Long Ankers area, the retail commercial complex at the Landing, all to the benefit of the Renton community, while continuing the robust manufacturing operations of the Boeing Company by agreements that are mutually beneficial to the city of Renton, its citizens, its industries, and its businesses. And whereas Lawrence J. Warren is welcomed into discussions as a problem solver and a team player, and the city of Renton has received faithful, loyal service, and a tremendous benefit from the legal skill and expertise of Lawrence J. Warren over many years. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 10, 2013, to be Lawrence J. Warren Appreciation Day, and encourage all citizens of the city of Renton and fellow city employees to acknowledge and thank Lawrence J. Warren for his almost four decades of faithful public service. A witness whereof, I appear to have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 10th day of June, 2013, signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
Move the council concur in the proclamation.
Second. And move by Mr. Carmen, seconded by Ms. Brier, that council concur with this proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passed, Larry. I was worried.
Remarkable.
Let's do a picture, photo. I'm gonna take a picture. He's gotta get all his trophies and proclamations together.
I can't even figure out who to laugh at. Larry, you wanna go ahead and receive that? All right, and if I could have you, so just, no, you can now just, you can hold it, stand towards me. Well, you're speaking away.
You're going to in the picture yet.
We're a friendly city. All right, thank you.
Does that comment about Auburn?
No, there was no offense in there, but you're throwing it into that.
I'm not used to being on this side of the mic. Quite often, when I stand in a mic and I'm looking up at a deus, it's at a court of appeals, and they usually have a bunch of very hard questions for me. So it's a little different. First, I would like to introduce my mother, Jean, my brother, Bill, and then my best friend and wife, Phil. And thank you, Dan, very much for the presentation of the award. It certainly is gratifying to receive an acknowledgement from one's peers for a lifetime of professional work. That means something above and beyond. I would be remiss in not acknowledging the contributions made over the years by my senior assistant, city attorneys, Zanetta Fontes and Mark Barber. I think this award, they, well, they've worked with me and for the city for 30 years, so I've got 36 years here, 30 years there, and a lot of experience. I think this award is as much about their work as it is mine, because I have a strong base that I can always rely upon them. As Dan said, I started working for the city in April of 1974, April 15, 1974, I remember the date well, and was appointed city attorney on November 1 of 1977, taking over from Gerard Sheldon, who was my partner at the time in the city attorney, who became a superior court judge. You think about that fact, 26 years, he was city attorney, 36 years for me, that's 52 years of continuous service from the two people. Did I add that up wrong? 62 years, yeah. Jerry was very well thought of as a city attorney, so he was the kid, just turned 30 years old, taking over for Judge Sheldon. I felt like the first basketball coach to follow John Wooden. For those of you who aren't sports fans, John Wooden was the men's college basketball coach at UCLA, and he won 10 of 12 national championships from 1964 to 75, and then retired in 1975. So that's kind of how I felt in '77 when I took over for Judge Sheldon. My job has been challenging, and it's been ever-changing. The city has grown tremendously. It was 23,000 people, I think, when I started here. It's just a bit larger now and a bit more complex. For the most part, it's been fun. There's been times when it hasn't been so fun. You've heard about the Playtime case, which of course is the professional highlight of my career if you talk to people outside of the city family. But I would like to express that more satisfying to me are the, on a personal level, has been the projects that I've had a hand in working on. And you've heard mention of many of them, the auto mall, the community center, various street projects, and many other projects that I've worked on during the year, during the years. And there's a common theme here. I was part of a team with others. Over the years, I've worked with many, many dedicated staff members, council members, and mayors. I've worked for seven mayors, six of them are city attorneys, and an awful lot of city council members. And the one thing that runs throughout this is that all of these people have been collegial and have had the best interests of the citizens of the city of Renton at heart. I've been very lucky to work with two chief administrative officers, Mike Parnas, who was here for about 15 years, who was an excellent man to work with, and then Jay, my friend, who has been very excellent to work with, has been supportive and always someone that I could talk to, and now as we're getting a little bit older, you know, somebody on staff that I can share some of my thoughts with about being an older citizen in government service. So I view this award as one that is a teamwork award, not as much as a personal award. I guess it says, I've successfully learned to play well with others over the years. Maybe that wasn't always the case. So to the staff, mayor, and council, as well as all of those members of the staff, councils, and mayors of the past, thank you for the chance to play for your team. It has been a grand time, and the game ain't over yet. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Larry. We're very proud of your achievements. Dan, thank you for coming out, and we're, it's really great to have your family, Larry, here this evening, too, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
I remember April 15, 1974. He was, and he still is, a great person, a wonderful friend, and a good attorney. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I, you know, I could never count the times that, just as he says, that we've had to work together on big issues. We've had just a myriad of different ideas. I think I just have to thank Larry for always, you know, considering every idea we have and then sort of steering us down the path where we're most likely to be successful, stay within the Constitution, and obtain the results we're looking for. And, you know, there's so many projects you didn't mention, Larry, we couldn't mention them all, but the city is just a much better place for all those contributions, so thank you.
Okay, now we'll go on to more mundane business for this evening. Mr. Covington, did you have an administrative report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Audience comment? We have one person sign up to address the council. Give your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes.
Stuart Avery, Renton, Washington. I've put together a little, very brief PowerPoint presentation. I've come to kind of give the council and the mayor, city staff, an update on something that took place over the weekend. This past Saturday, Renton's New Life Church, which is off of Maple Valley Highway, just past, just across from Ron Regis Park, had our biennial Single Moms Oil Change event on our church's Renton campus there. This is the fourth year that this event has taken place, and it started with our church as an outreach program, or a mission, really, to serve our community in a tangible way that would have a positive impact, supporting those already in difficult situations. So as you might imagine, a single mom will often compromise on car care when time and resources are tight. A reliable, safe vehicle is critical for a single mom, but often their cars will last to get much-needed attention. Often the attention comes only at the time of the catastrophic failure, and then there's often not enough money to perform repairs. When we started the Single Moms Oil Change event four years ago, we serviced about 30 or 40 cars on our first Saturday afternoon, and we thought that that was just above and beyond amazing. Since then, the event has grown, and this past Saturday was our most successful effort yet. We had over 100 men and women volunteers from the church and from the community come out to change oil filters, check and service vital fluids, replace light bulbs, wiper blades, fill tires, vacuumed 169 vehicles.
Wow.
On a Saturday afternoon. All done at zero charge to these single moms. The moms checked their cars in, they come in at a scheduled time slot, so they basically check in. Volunteers valet the cars down to the oil-changing area, while the moms and the kids were allowed to relax in the auditorium where they're fed and pampered. The kids had gaming rooms to enjoy with Xbox, and we, there was also arts and crafts, and we even had a hydro plane. One of our church members brought in a hydro plane for the kids to climb on and get their pictures taken. So it was really a lot of fun for the kids as well. We also had local business Interstate Battery, which I think just opened up in Renton. They were on hand to provide full battery assessments on every single one of the cars. The moms got a printout of everything that might be wrong with their charging systems, and if they, you know, had to take a look at that or not. Also, Washington State Department of Ecology had a representative on hand all day as part of the Don't Drip and Drive campaign, which you may be familiar with, to fix car oil leaks. They provided educational videos for the moms and guests that could watch, talking about how to do some of the basic maintenance on our vehicles to keep them from dripping oil and fluids into our storm system. The Don't Drip and Drive program is part of STORM, which is Stormwater Outreach for Regional Municipalities, and I'm proud to know that Renton is actually a member of the Storm Consortium. And we also had O'Reilly's participate, where they provided one of their employees for the entire afternoon to kind of go for parts that we maybe didn't have on hand for a particular model that we weren't expecting, or we may have had a need that we couldn't fill right away. So just partnering with these local businesses and the volunteers made the event very successful. Many of these oil change guests sign up through notification that they received through DSHS. So, you know, I've been asked, how did these moms find out about it? Because we don't do any advertising in the papers or anything. Well, we network through Department of Social and Health Services, and there's also several single moms that go to New Life Church that take advantage of our event. Through the recent Chamber of Commerce Awards Ceremony, which was, I think, just this past Thursday night, I was also able to convince another one of our local business owners, Oil King Henry's up on the Highlands, to come out and just take a look at what we were doing on Saturday. And he showed up about noon, right when we had kind of a lull in the activity, and so I had an opportunity to show him what we were doing, introduce him to a couple of our pastors. He sent me an email the very next day. He says, guys, I am blown away by what you are doing. What a terrific way to give back and minister to the community. It's a no-brainer. I'm in. I'll figure out soon how in I can be after I speak with the suppliers, with Oil King Henry's corporate office, but stay tuned. I'm really excited for what you guys are doing. So I just wanted to give the council, mayor, city staff, an opportunity to kind of hear what's going on in the community that you might now have seen in the papers or in other local media.
Thanks.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to say, that is fantastic, especially during these times when we've got single moms that are impacted, you know, and if they're single moms, that means that they're, you know, they're working, you know, they, many of them have minimum wage jobs, they don't make enough money to make all the ends meet, and you nailed it when you said they don't maintain the vehicles properly. So I think this is just a wonderful way that you created a partnership with our local business owners, and also tied into some of the goals that we have in terms of our stormwater protection for, you know, different things getting into the system, and just fantastic job, Stuart. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
Move the council concur in the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
And move by Mr. Carmen, seconded by Ms. Brier, that council concur with a concur-
And moved by Mr. Carmen, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Carmen.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No old business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Zwicker?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has one report. Finance Committee report, authorized new hire of system analyst programmer. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to offer the new hire system analyst programmer at step E of salary grade A-21 effective June 3rd, 2013. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move that council concur with the Finance Committee report?
Second.
And moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution this evening.
This resolution regards a interlocal agreement. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation, supplementing contract number 10002 for the Highlands to Boeing-Landy pedestrian connection project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move that council concur with this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Carmen, that this resolution be adopted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to new business, Mr. Carmen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just like to announce a committee of the whole meeting for June 17th, 5:30 to 6:30 PM, in the Seventh Floor Conference Center. And we have two items on that agenda, an update on marijuana regulations and an update on May Creek property acquisitions. And then that will be followed by, from 6:30, 7:00, by a fire department promotion reception in the Conference Center.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Carmen, those are briefings only?
Oh, thank you, yes. Briefings only for the 5:30 to 6:30 committee of the whole, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a, any new business, but I did have something that I planned on presenting in our emerging issues meeting, and it's important that I do it in a timely manner, so I'll just go ahead and announce it. As a part of the, and you remember, we had the, Dr. Inga Ciallo, who is the division director from King County, who came and did a presentation for us. She invited me to join the King County Place Matters team. They have a lab, and they're known as Lab Four. The King County Equity and Social Justice Initiative was born through an effort from the Joint Center for Political and Economic Studies that created a Place Matters Initiative. And out of that Place Matters Initiative, back in '07, they created sixteen labs, and King County is one of them. And over the past six years, they've been involved in some design phase of their Equity and Social Justice Initiative that has moved to become an ordinance. And now they're moving into the design lab phase, and I've been invited to join that team, and so I'll be going back to National Harbor in Prince George County, Maryland, for three days in July. And at the same time, you might remember that last year I was scheduled to attend the Harvard Kennedy School's Senior Executives and State and Local Government Program. I was unable to do so at that time, but they were gracious enough to extend the invitation for me and hold the spot open for me for this year. So, I'll also be attending the Harvard Kennedy School's Senior Executives and State and Local Government Program from July the 8th through the 28th. And it's a wonderful program. I wanted to just mention that the program is competitive in terms of applicants who apply. They look for individuals who have, based on professional achievement and organizational responsibility. Some of the things that I'm excited about that I'll have an opportunity to do is to be among seventy-five other government leaders from around the world, and we will be learning things from challenging assumptions about how to exercise leadership in the public sector, developing new conceptual frameworks for addressing policy issues, examining innovative partnerships and new models of collaborative governance, exploring the relationship between citizens and their government, understanding the behavioral dimensions of decision-making, and exchanging ideas with experienced faculty and a diverse group of colleagues. One of the learning models that we'll be using is called the case method. We will be analyzing and discussing cases selected to provoke insight into a wider way of strategic management and leadership issues. One of the unique things about this is that each case is a real-life situation that stimulates participants to think through problem-solving methods and possible solutions. And in the last two weeks of the program, we will work on our own case, cases based on actual challenges that we face in our own jurisdiction. So, I'm looking forward to it. I'm very excited about it, and I just wanted to make sure that the council know that I'd be absent from council from July 8th through the 28th. I'm not sure if we've got an off day scheduled in there for the holidays, but I'll be raring to go when I get back, and just excited to announce that to you all.
That sounds great, Greg. Congratulations.
Thank you. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zwicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Monday, June 17th, at 9:00 AM, in the council conference room. We have three items. Think we've gonna, I'm gonna, probably, let me go back, let me announce them, and then I'm gonna go back and figure out what we've got briefing-wise and a little explanation on one of them. Three items coming up would be the alley policy review, second item is boundary line adjustment discussion, which is a briefing, and the third is Benson Community Garden and Dog Park update. Working backwards, the Benson Community Garden and Dog Park update would be a briefing only, boundary line adjustment discussion would be also a briefing only. The number-one alley policy review, many of you, I think, if not all of you, have been contacted by master builders or their representatives regarding some issues they have with our existing policy requiring alleys in some more, or more dense new constructions. It got referred into Planning and Development, there's been discussions with the administration and the affected parties. I met with them a month or so back, maybe two months, and we had a quarterly meeting with them. All throughout this process, we keep feeling like we have this problem solved, and we understand their concerns and can address them, and then it seems to go sideways again. And I think that's how it's ended up on some of your plates. We think we have it back into an understanding about how to just do an administrative interpretation and correct the issue. That's what we're gonna hear about on Monday morning in Planning and Development. If it's done and the agreements that we thought that we had are in play, then it can probably come out with nothing more than just a committee report to close out that portion of the referral. However, I'm really kind of going into it wanting to hear and evaluate where we're at, so a likely, also very likely response, and that would be that I would just refer to Committee of the Whole that night. But, so I'm just gonna kind of take the pulse of it, see if I can get the parties back again one more time to commit to what they've committed to prior. It's simply the issue it has come down to, and I think it's where I would frame the discussion if we take it out, Committee of the Whole, is the intention of, the alley requirement was basically the wish of the council to have a livable, walkable, pedestrian-friendly, community-built neighborhood in these new developments that we're doing up in the East Plateau and elsewhere. And we've heard from many of the members of the master builders that in some instances alleys may be difficult, but they understand that overall concept and can deliver us with that. So, that's why I'm kind of surprised that we're still hearing about this, when I think everybody understands the same page. So, I'll take a look at that one Monday. If it's not there in an easy, digestible format, I'll bring it back out Monday night and go Committee of the Whole, so everybody can weigh in on it. That was all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Zwicker. It seemed like a great way to resolve it, and I, like probably most of us, was contacted by master builders as well. So, I appreciate you looking, and if there's, if it still seems confusing or you feel like there's seeds for controversy, I'd welcome you forwarding that on to Committee of the Whole, so we can at least all take a look at it. On the other hand, I'd be delighted if you just felt like, wow, this is all, everybody agrees, we're just gonna put it through.
I'm very cognizant of the last time we had something like this, we ended up with council members suing other council members. So, I'm trying to avoid that at all costs, and we'll see what we end up with.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee will meet next Monday, the 17th, from 5:00 to 5:30 PM. We have two items, vouchers and emerging issues and revenue streams. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Meeting, Committee Meeting for next Monday is canceled.
Okay, and Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Aviation Committee is going to meet this Thursday, which is June 13th, a different time than normal, from 1:30 to 2:30, and will be in the council conference room. There's three items on the agenda. The first is the six-year TIP, Transportation Improvement Plan. Second is airport purchase of a forklift, and the third is emerging issues in transportation.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to audience comment, is anybody that wanted to address the council?
Howard McCumber, living in the Renton Highlands. I actually hadn't planned on saying it to you, but I was thinking I just needed to say something. I want to tell you how much we appreciate, we had a benefit dinner Friday night to help raise money, private money, to go in with all the things that are happening, develop a very special playground up in our Highlands that will welcome everybody that's suited for people who are living with autism or have other physical problems, as well as everybody else. It was just a wonderful thing, and it was the whole evening, and many of you were there. And I know some of you anonymously gave all sorts of time and food and everything else. And I appreciate your tremendous support. The Highlands are of course very important to me, and I think that the improvement up there is just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr.-
I'm really glad Mr. McCumber mentioned that. I should have mentioned it too. I thought Tony Ventrella's work with his cast of stars that put on the fundraiser, well, they put on a presentation that was part of a fundraiser, and Mr. Person, great food, thanks to you and your barbecue and-
And you liked the Neil Diamond music.
The Neil Diamond music was great. You know, just, and what a, what, just as Mr. McCumber says, terrific that people, private parties would come together to make this public playground a better playground, so.
That's very good.
Thank you, Howard, for reminding us about that.
Mr. Mayor, how much was raised?
I don't know. I haven't heard back, because I know there were still checks coming in, so.
I was very sorry to meet it. I was sitting on I-5 coming home from Oregon.
I do, I do know that Tony Ventrella auctioned off two autographed footballs for a thousand dollars apiece, so.
Wonderful.
It was very clever. He got the bidding going for one of them. He had one, and he got it up to a thousand dollars and goes, "Well, I'll make it two, and both of you guys can get one."
That worked out great. What's the wish of the council?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?